Call me in order. Everyone is here except Bruce. Okay, are there any additions to the agenda?
There are none.
We have motion to approve the agenda.
Someone's.
Second, Ashley, and Cheryl second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no one's here for public comment. Move on to the consent agenda. The minutes, well, just throw it to Matt.
Okay, so the minutes of the 22nd and October 13th are there. Cheryl, do you want to talk about the financial items?
I was able to go in today and check through the bills and it was pretty much normal business. I noticed there were some new additions for the Innovation Center. Looks like they're having a lot of fun in there. I was able to visit with a couple of the employees the other day and it sounds like it's being well, it was well attended. I don't know what's happening right now with us going hybrid, but other than that, everything was pretty much normal bills.
I just wanted to mention one item too on the financial items. If you guys track, excuse me, if you track kind of the the monthly amount that is paid out in bills and stuff, you are going to start to see a little bit of an uptick. Obviously, when the facility project started, there was a significant uptick. Those have continued, but you're going to see a little bit of an uptick as well as some of this coronavirus relief aid is scheduled. For instance, like we had just shy of $100,000 from Stearns County was allocated to us. Those things need to be spent by October 31st. And so you will start to see some of that. There are a couple of state programs that end in, at the end of December, and so those allocations will be coming through. And then there are some that end next spring as well. So if you're, if you track that monthly expenditures month by month, it's usually pretty consistent, but you'll notice that it is going to probably tick upward here for the next six to seven months as those, those dollars are expended. The personnel items, there are several parrot positions that are filled. These are parrot positions that have always been here, but with turnover, those positions have been filled. We do have a long-term sub. Edie Becker is long-term subbing right now at the elementary school for a teacher out on leave. We did also hire a remote learning facilitator. Veronia is working with, I believe it's about 27 students right now that are in remote learning. It is the students that are full-time remote that have selected to, to choose that, that learning model. That is where the, the priority is. I would say also that her, her priority as far as student ages is she's really focusing mostly on that K6, K7 population. K8 is the majority of her kids for certain. We'll see how it goes. It's new. This is not something that we've ever experienced before, so it's going to be something that'll be fluid and we'll see where we end up and who knows, we might in the spring or after the holiday, we might be looking at hiring another remote learning facilitator. We will have to see how things go with that. The PAWS program assignments are on there and then there's some early childhood assignments as well. Those are typical of this time of year. Jen Welly has accepted the clerical position in the secondary office that was created when Amy Bass resigned her position. And then Jasmine Walters is our new special ed teacher that was created, that vacancy was created when Megan Leeser resigned her position. So it looks like a lot of movement and stuff, but it really is, is kind of what it is at this point. Questions at all on the personnel side of things?
Okay, is there a motion to accept the consent?
I'm staying from voting.
Jacob, second.
I'll second.
We need a vote. Thomas will make the motion, Maggie will second. Thank you.
And then Katie, did you get that, that Jake is not voting?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, administrative report, Matt?
A couple of things for you. We're approaching the end of quarter one, February here, February, November 6th. It feels like February, let's be honest. It's cold out. November 6th is the end of quarter one, so we are quickly approaching that. The significant item with that is really at our secondary building. Obviously, quarter one has been just an A-day schedule and so as we transition to quarter two at the beginning of November, students will now attend classes that are their B-day schedules. And so that's the, the real significance of the end of quarter one. We continue to monitor COVID-19 related issues and I'm, I'm sure some of you listened to the governor's press conference or at least saw snippets or heard snippets of it. We are continuing to monitor that and our team meets every Thursday at 3:30. We will evaluate learning model this week with the idea then of also setting a date in November in which we will evaluate our learning model. Our auditors were out. It was about a week and a half ago, I believe, they finished up and everything is, is coming back. The audit went very well. There are no findings in our audit, so it's a, it's a clean audit and I think the board, you can expect to have the auditors out at the November business meeting to go over fiscal year 20 audit like they normally do each fall. Those are the three items I have. Questions at all for me?
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any committee reports?
On September 30th, we had the Joint Powers Board meeting and usually we're pretty much just a placeholder on that, on that committee and, but we have to be there by law and I'm a voting member, so you have to have a quorum and the whole bit. But there's not a whole lot that comes through there, but they had some monies left over other than, what was it, $8,000 and something that we get every year from them? $8,865 that we got last year. We voted to, the excess money that wasn't used for programs this last year because of COVID, we voted to just split it up amongst the different entities that for us that comes to $2,222 minus the $68 for project fees. So we get an extra $2,154. Other than that, the rest of the meeting was pretty much just normal financials.
Okay.
What we gained.
Any other committees? I know transportation met, but that's on here later, so we'll get that.
Policy committee met, but that's on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that. Any other committees? Okay, then student rep?
Um, I just have that last week was homecoming week and we had a virtual past on Tuesday. So it was an interesting homecoming week with COVID and our new model, so those are interesting, but I think the students felt like they still had homecoming, so we did our best, so that's all I have.
Are we funding? I would assume that.
We are. Yeah, yeah, it's, we are.
I know, things are, there are more important things.
It's a mess, let's be honest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Old business, any old business. I see none on there, so we go into new business seniority list?
The seniority list, as the district has interpreted them, are attached to this agenda, the next step for these. Excuse me, they have been posted and shared with the, the employees as well. We have not received any challenges to any of the data on any of the seniority list, so it would be my recommendation for the board to approve these as they are included in the agenda.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the seniority list? Thomas makes motion, second.
I'll second.
Cheryl, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Okay, assurance of compliance?
November 15th is the deadline for assurance of compliance each year. Typically, this is now moved to MDE has moved this to a online submittal. So basically, what I am looking for from the board is the approval to get this submitted and into MDE before the November 15th deadline. Essentially, what we are agreeing and offering our assurance on is that we are going to follow all states and federal laws and statutes as they would apply to the school district. There really isn't anything in there that I think anybody's going to object to or say, hey, I don't want to have to follow that.
I just have a question.
Yep.
The data verification is 11-1 of 2019 in here, is this?
Yep, so that is, that is.
I didn't know if it was a.
I just wanted to verify exactly which.
It's right at, it's the first page.
Right, so that is the, from the last one that was submitted on 11-1. When I go in to actually submit it, it'll auto-populate into the new date. So if I go tomorrow, then you'll see it'll be 10:28 or whatever. It auto-populates that.
Okay, perfect. I just.
It's just hard to provide you guys something that you can see what you're agreeing to when it's all an online submittal now.
Right, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion to proceed?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Maggie makes motion, second.
I'll second.
Thomas, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. Election results.
So we will have a school district election on November 3rd. So as a result, we have to figure out when this body's going to get together and canvas those results. The statute does lay out some criteria. We cannot meet before November 6th, but we must meet by November 13th. So as I looked at the calendar, what I thought maybe would be the easiest thing to do is since we are already meeting on November 10th, is that we could schedule a special meeting for 5:30 PM on November 10th, right in this room, just before our work session, and we could have a special meeting with the only agenda item being to canvas the election results. Otherwise, that is just the thought that I had. Of course, any other, if that doesn't work for people and you want to move it, you can move it to any date you want. Like I said, it just can't happen before November 6th and it has to happen by November 13th.
I think that makes sense. But is it 5:45 or not?
5:45 would work. Realistically, I think the meeting will be about three to five minutes is what the meeting's going to be. 5:45?
5:45, okay. Do we have to make a motion on that or?
Yep.
Okay, so is there a motion that we meet at 5:45 on?
Tuesday, November 10th.
Tuesday, November 10th. So the candidacy. Thomas makes motion, second. Maggie, second, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I was going to make a crack about, has the Supreme Court taking care of, you know, Delia by then or we don't know, but.
We will have our local election.
It's going to be a tough one. That's where Bruce is tonight, I think he's all campaigning.
And then Katie, will you just make sure that that clearly states that we'll meet in the secondary school board room as well?
Yeah.
Okay, then we got the Safe Engineering contract.
So this is an extension from our discussion at the last work session. Safe Engineering is the company in which I believe we should be seeking out assistance as far as the upgrades to the softball complex and getting those fields flipped and getting us going in the, the right direction. This contract is really laid out as kind of a cafeteria-style contract. If you go to page six of the contract, you can see essentially, when you're talking about design services, they're talking about a 7.5% of estimated project costs. Once project costs are actually figured out, they will solidify what that is. And then if you want the construction management fees, they're running roughly 2.5%. Both of those numbers are very close to industry standards and I'm not concerned with either of those. We still have the ability to choose what components of this we want. If we just want the assistance with design, we can do the assistance with design only. If we finish up design and we want some construction management services, but maybe we don't want everything that is on there, we are able to still work with them to come up with a slimmed-down version of construction management as well. And then as you can see, if you go into page seven, there is also kind of the same cafeteria style that would be as far as the athletic rack and the, the football complex. And then he did put something in here. He's aware that we are going to have some conversations about synthetic turf and what that looks like, so that is something that would, he would be able to assist with again. There's nothing in this contract that is, is locking us, us to that. So essentially, the next step would be for the board to approve this and then from there, we would just be communicating directly with Neil from Safe Engineering as far as what services we would like to engage their firm for and which ones we are opting on to is, is the next step. Questions at all?
In that next phase, let's say we, you know, pick a few things and that will be a much more detailed contract that would include all the details.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to accept the contract?
I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
Second?
I'll second.
Thomas, second, discussion, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Okay, we're up to Stearns County Family Services, Joint Powers Agreement.
So the Stearns County Family Services Collaborative, that is the Joint Powers Board that, that Cheryl was referencing earlier, they do a longitudinal time study as far as, their whole goal is to try to determine activities and services that help prevent out-of-home placement of school-aged children. So you can see all the members, this is the, Stearns County is a member, all of the school districts in the county are members, and you have the Stearns County Human Services Board, Reach Up Incorporated, and then Tri-County Action Program. Those 13 entities make up this joint powers body. This agreement was up for renewal as it was set to expire. It would be my recommendation to approve this. Right now, you know, we started the, the longitudinal time study back up five years ago, maybe Cheryl, you know, somewhere in there.
Yeah, right around there.
It had been in, in effect and it was going and, and then it kind of lost its, its oomph and, and it stopped for a period of six or seven years and now it's back. They generate in the neighborhood of, you know, $200,000, $250,000 annually, which then is, is distributed back to these entities. The way that school districts get their funding is it is based on a percentage of total enrollment within the county. So obviously, your largest school district such as St. Cloud and Sartell will see, will receive larger amounts of funding versus your smaller school districts like Kimball or Painesville. But it's, usually it's about $9,000 annually. As Cheryl mentioned, this year they're putting some additional dollars back that weren't used in the spring because of the shutdown and so this year we'll actually have a little over $11,000 for, for use. The way we expend our dollars is all in school-based mental health services is how we expend those dollars. Questions at all?
Does it say, what, how long is the agreement for? Is it a year later?
Oh, no, I want to say it's a 10-year agreement. For some reason, I thought I saw it in there somewhere, but I'm not going to be able to find it.
That's okay, unless somebody else needs to know. He won't be back for a while anyways.
No, it won't.
Okay, is there a motion to exprove?
I'll make that motion.
Cheryl, move, a second. I'll second it. Can I second?
Yes.
Then I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Transportation contract.
So we met, so right now we are in the middle of a four-year transportation contract with Painesville Motor and Transfer. The first two years, so this would have been in July of 2018, is when this contract was originally negotiated. Both parties agreed that we would have a four-year contract. However, we did the financial terms for simply the first two years. And then from there, we agreed that we would come back together and finish out the financial terms for the last two years as we got closer to that. The intent of this was to have this finalized in August. Other things have happened and, and it didn't follow that timeline. However, the financial terms that have been agreed to are basically a contract freeze for the next two years, so we would be taking the terms of the, the financial terms of the 2019, 2020 school year and those would be rolled forward for the 2020, 2021 school year and the 2021, 2022 school year. So essentially, the base amount of $772,650 is that same base that will be applied to this year and next year. Do any of the board members have anything additional that wanted to mention or bring up?
Well, I was at that meeting and on the committee and I just, working with Michael, just a no-brainer that will approve this and he's been very cooperative and I think we're very, should be very thankful, but have a good relationship with him.
And that's something that I can just speak to briefly, too. I mean, it, it's always interesting and when you go from a setting where you were owning your own buses and transportation and coming in and working with a contractor and I'll be perfectly frank, I couldn't be more happy than, than working with Painesville Motor and Transfer. I believe it has really been a, a good relationship that really is prioritizing what is the best thing for students. So I would, I would echo what Rick is saying.
I was also at that meeting and I'd have to mimic what Rick was saying. Michael was very easy to work with and very cooperative and very understanding of what the school district is going through. It was an excellent meeting. I, I would mimic Rick's saying.
And what they're going through and I think, you know, we have to appreciate that, that they're going through some tough times too, so.
Are we seeing, I'm just out of curiosity, a drop in miles just because we're doing less activities and more field trips or with some additional roads or how is that kind of playing out?
Yeah, there, there definitely will be a drop in miles. So the way the contract is set up is there was a, a clause in there that the first 18,500 miles of open enrollment miles is part of the base contract. The first 24,000 of extracurricular miles is part of the base contract. Typically, the extracurricular miles either get right up to that, that threshold or slightly go over. In a given year, typically, we have far more open enrollment miles than that 18,000. Last year, due to the spring shutdown, clearly neither of those ceilings were met and so that's, that's definitely something that is impacting, you know, his revenue. But yeah, there's, there's definitely a, a decrease in the number of miles. I mean, you roll that forward to this year, well, granted, you know, it doesn't really matter what sort of a, a hybrid model we're in, we still probably are going to be tied to our 12 bus routes and, and, you know, you could make an argument that they could modify them to reduce some miles, but it, it's not always as simple as it seems. But certainly with the reduction in, 30% reduction in all Minnesota State High School League activities and length of seasons and number of competitions, there's definitely going to be a mile, mileage decrease with that as well.
Any other discussion on the transportation contract? It's really not a new contract, it's just.
It's just finalizing the financial terms of the last two years. The next step in this after, I'm assuming it will be approved, but then the next step would be, well, when we get to that last year of the contract, probably in, in March of that year, we'll need to get together and, and renegotiate a new contract for when that one expires on June 30th of 2022.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I will.
Thomas, a second?
I'll second.
Cheryl seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We approve the transportation contract. Brings us up to the policy committee met on October 5th and began reviewing more, more policies, so I'll let Matt kind of lead us through those.
So the meeting, meeting notes are there. I think they kind of get into the nitty-gritty if you're looking exactly what is, is changing and everything. What I did attach here are the proposed policies, so the next step would be, this is a first reading. The next step with these proposed policies would be, the, the policies would be posted and available in the district office if anybody wants to come in and review those or inquire or ask questions or voice concern, that would be their, their avenue to do that. A policy 601 school district curriculum and instructional goals, the format and, and goals in which MDE is requiring has changed and so that is, is the major reflection of 601. Curriculum development and 612.1, the, the development of parental involvement policies for Title I programs, most of those were technical in nature. All three of those that I just mentioned, the, the policy committee is recommending going with the MSBA recommended policy. Policy 616, that one is something that is going to be significantly different than, than what we had. 616 in the past had a policy that was very brief and then the rest of it was considered an administrative procedure. I don't really know that we need to continue that. I think we should just put all of it as a policy that way it's on the website if people have questions, it's one place to go versus going and seeing a very abbreviated policy and then they have to go inquire with somebody as to where the procedure is and stuff. But the big thing with 616 is the creation of a district advisory committee. And the, the issue that I think the discussion around this was, we have a lot of needs for a district advisory committee, but it's really hard to have community members and parents and students volunteer to help complete that work if there's not regular scheduled work that needs to be completed. You know, we always kind of have, scratch our head about, you know, how do we get committed volunteers? Well, if they've got a purpose and if they've got a goal and if they feel like they're accomplishing something and they're, they're contributing towards something larger, I feel like we have volunteers. But when you, I might just use world's best workforce as an example and this isn't picking on world's best workforce, but when you just simply meet once a year and it feels like you're just meeting to meet, there really is, it's hard to really bring people in and have commitment to, to a process. So if you look at page, page four of the policy, what I've kind of laid out is a September to July calendar that this district advisory committee would follow. And in talking with that, the administrative team, what we would really like to see is that this district advisory committee would just be in a regular committee that we are thinking would probably meet every other month. So there'd be six meetings for sure every year, but then we would be able to drive a lot of different, whether it's input, feedback, brainstorm activities through this district advisory committee. It would also serve to be able to be our Title I committee that needs to be as part of policy 612 dot one. It would also serve potentially as a community ed advisory committee. I mean, it could serve so many different functions and that's really the, the change to 616. So if this goes forward, now again, this is just first reading, so next month it'll be back at the end of the month for final approval. And so then I would really look at in January, kicking off and getting soliciting membership in a district advisory committee, getting people that express any interest to come to kind of an informational meeting and walk them through an actual calendar of what they would be participating in and what we would be looking for. And then we would, would go from there. So the, the nuts and bolts of this and what I want all board members to walk away from is as we're talking about this, I would hope that each of you would be providing me with maybe two to three names of people that you think potentially would be a good fit for a district advisory committee that I could try to engage to see if that's something that they would, would be interested in. So questions on 616? It is, it's the biggest difference out of any of these policies from, from what we currently have approved. have approved.
Any questions? Anything on 620?
Oh, actually, thank you for bringing that up, Rick. 620, there are some, a few technical changes with 620, but again, it is the MSBA recommended policy. The only thing in 620 that is unique from MSBA, it's not really unique, it's just part of what we need to do is, they have a piece in there wanting school districts to define the process in which they weigh grades at the secondary level. And just for all board members' information, we do not have weighted grades at our secondary level, and so that portion of credit for learning is not included.
Okay, there's no action needed tonight on this?
You do need to approve a first reading, and then we will post these, we'll bring them back for final approval at the November meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the first reading of these policies? Thomas, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Maggie, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we'll see them again next month. Okay, safer out to schools planning information.
So are any of you familiar with Safe Routes to Schools? So it's a statewide program, I know the Department of Transportation is involved in it. They essentially open up grant dollars for communities that are willing to go through a planning process in order to try to increase the population of school-aged children that are walking or biking to school. And they acknowledge that our infrastructure sometimes is what is the limiting factor in whether a child can walk or bike to school, not so much their necessary desire or convenience like that. A classic example in our community is having Highway 55 where it's located. It's really an unnerving thing for some families to have young teenagers crossing Highway 55 in order to get to the secondary school. Or if you're over, in the addition just to the east of the secondary school, it's really difficult for young students to cross Highway 55 to get to the elementary school. So what the city would like to do is, the city would like to begin a planning process that would include the school district, and we would go through this formal planning process that then would get us a final document or a final case study, so to speak, as far as what our needs are in our community, how we could improve the safety for school-aged children to travel to and from school. And then having that case study also would give us a much better chance to be able to be eligible for potential MINDOT-associated grants that could potentially help offset any of the projects. I've met with the city twice about this, and I have expressed our interest in doing the planning. The only thing that we would be out, the only resources we have to bring to the table is time. We do not need to bring any financial resources to the planning. After the planning, then we would evaluate grants on a case-by-case basis, and if it's something that there are resources and we feel like it's good value, we can move forward with a project, but there's no commitment because we went through a planning process that means we have to follow through with any of the grants or plans that are developed. Questions at all about Safe Routes to School?
So would all the grants and the funding mechanisms would go through the city, or like the school, or it would come through the school that you would?
It doesn't have to go through the city, it can. But, you know, a lot of these projects that, so let's just say, like, for instance, at Highway 55 by Carl's Appliance where they have the new crosswalk, maybe part of what the study yields is, if you actually had a tunnel underneath 55, there's data that suggests that you would have more kids that would either go underneath the tunnel to the north to get to the elementary school or come to the south to get to the high school. That could be something that is a project we want to pursue, and maybe it's something where we can find grant funding for 50% of it, maybe the city can come up with a quarter, and maybe the school can come up with a quarter. It doesn't lock anyone into a specific funding mechanism or amount, but it will get us to the point where I think we would be seriously considered for grants. A lot of these MINDOT grants, you don't have to go to Safe Route, go through this planning to be eligible to apply for them. It's just the large amount of awardees coincidentally have gone through this planning process and have the data to support what it is they're requesting.
Have we done this in the past, you know?
So, you know, I only know from my conversations with the city is I do not believe that Painesville has ever gone through the planning process.
Is this something we head up, or is the city heading up, or the joint coming together?
So I will work with the city, and then we will also work with the city engineer. The city engineer is the one who's actually going to get us into the planning process with the appropriate. So if you guys approve this and say, yep, let's investigate this further, what I would do tomorrow then is I would send a letter of support to the city engineer who then could incorporate that into their application to get us into the planning phase. There's no cost at all for the planning phase.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to proceed?
I'll make that motion.
Cheryl, second? I'll second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
So then, as we move forward with this, the next question that I'm going to bring back is, I do think we probably should be identifying a couple of board members that are willing to engage in this planning process. I'm not saying that that means two board members have to attend all of the planning meetings, but if we could at least have a board member at all of the planning sessions, I think that would be a good way to go about it. But that's a little bit down the road, let me get the letter of support off, I'll get a timeline, I believe our business meeting, I think, is November 24th.
Right.
And I believe we have to get our application in for the planning sessions by November 25th. So, end of November is when our application would go in, I would think early December is when the city engineer would be calling us and saying, hey, our application was approved, or we didn't get into this cohort. But, so just think about that for now, and come December, at the latest January, I'm probably going to be asking for a couple of board members that'd be willing to invest some time into that planning process.
Okay, upcoming meetings, I think we're, for you, there's one change, we went to 5:45 for the canvassing meetings, so...
And do we want to add the strategic planning meetings to this, or is that different? Is that not really going to?
Yeah, no, I don't think they need to be on here. You know, policy committee is November 2nd, West Central Ed Board Meeting, I believe, is the 9th of November. And then we have 5:45 for the canvassing of election results, and then we have our work and learn, and then our regular business meeting.
Okay. I think we completed our business.
Excuse me, I move the board to now adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.